Hey, everybody. Glad to see you here tonight. Sit back and relax. We hope you're feeling all right. If you want to clap your hands or sing along instead, don't hold back, go ahead. Don't keep it to yourself. Give it away to somebody else. It'll make their day. Don't keep it to yourself. Give it away to somebody else. It'll make their day. You've got a song that the world should hear. Don't keep it to yourself. Don't keep it. You've got a love that the world should feel. Don't keep it to yourself. Don't keep it alone. Some compassion, waiting for your time. And innovation you're afraid to mention. A wild idea for a new creation. Let me feel so alive of the situation. Don't keep it to yourself.
Everybody's got a song the world's just wanting to hear. You've been waiting too long, so come on now. Let's sing it out loud and clear. Everybody's got the love that the world's just needing so bad. It's the kind of love that you've got to give. It's the kind they've never had.
Don't keep it to yourself. Don't keep it. Give it away. Give it. Somebody else. Somebody. It'll make their day. Don't keep it to yourself. Don't keep it. Give it away. Give it. Somebody else. Somebody. It'll make their day. Everybody's got a song.
Don't keep it to yourself. Don't keep it to yourself. Everybody's got a love. Don't keep it to yourself. Don't keep it to yourself. Everybody's got a song. Don't keep it to yourself. Don't keep it to yourself. Everybody's got a home. Don't keep it. Don't keep it. Don't keep it to yourself. Don't keep it. Give it away. Give it. Somebody else. Somebody. It'll make their day. Everybody's got a song. Don't keep it to yourself. Don't keep it to yourself. Everybody's got a song. Don't keep it to yourself. Don't keep it to yourself. Everybody's got a home. Don't keep it. Don't keep it. Don't keep it. Don't keep it to yourself. Don't keep it. Give it away. Give it. Somebody else. It'll make their day. Don't keep it to yourself. Don't keep it. Give it away. Give it. Somebody else. It'll make their day. Don't keep it to yourself. Don't keep it. Give it away. Give it. Somebody else. It'll make their day. Don't keep it to yourself. Don't keep it. It'll make their day. Yeah. Woo. Up the people. Who remembers that? I think they remember that.
Yep. All right. That's getting us excited for the Expo 74 anniversary coming up soon.
I just want to say if we remake that video, I would like to be in it. So I don't know who I need to tell that to, but I want to be in it.
All right. We can discuss that at our upcoming council retreat. That'll be good. All right. Well, if you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Present.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers opposed.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right. And tonight, we have another installment of Poetry at the Podium, courtesy of Spokane Arts. And joining us tonight is Susan Ko Lundstrum, who's going to read Peaceful Valley. Susan, welcome to City Council.
And thank you for allowing poets to come and share. So, thank you. And this is a poem about, right over the hill where I was born, Peaceful Valley. And my name is Susan. Peaceful Valley. Sun filters through deciduous trees, leaving ground speckles like frogs who hide by Spokane River. Dank, moisture, and memories float around my birthplace. City noises muted by whirling river eddies, where my brothers skipped rocks or swung like shoeless Tarzans from cement pillars while leaving shoes to be devoured by dark river mud. The neighborhood Japanese grocery store is gone. My mother often placed me on countertop as owners affectionately showered me with trinkets and Bonton rice candy. Mariano's brick home still stands on the corner, where I recall succulent tastes of adobo, learned traditional Filipino dance, played chase with friends, and hid behind large pink peonies. Down the street from us, the old German couple served us apple strucel and dark black coffee to my parents. My father said it reminded him of the cowboy coffee that he once knew. Gone is our home on Wilson Street. Only crumpled stairs remain, with some of my mother's mint plant perhaps still growing under thick unkept foliage. Mother made sure that the sprigs of this mint followed her to our new home, then found its way to mine, only a jaunt away from where my life began, where it now takes powerful root. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
All right. And we have both a proclamation and a salutation. We're going to start with the proclamation of Christmas Tree Elegance, Councilmember Wilkerson. And we're joined by Jennifer Ogden.
Thank you. Whereas the Spokane Symphony Associates is a nonprofit organization comprised of a diverse group of dedicated men and women who believe that having a symphony orchestra in Spokane enhances the quality of life in the community. And whereas the Spokane Symphony Associates exists to provide financial and volunteer support for the Spokane Symphony Orchestra, as well as educational and involvement opportunities for the community. And this symphony season will celebrate its 77th anniversary. And whereas, one of the goals of the Spokane Symphony Associates is to provide an annual community family event, Christmas Tree Elegance, to herald the holiday season, which in its 40th year continues to be their largest fundraiser for the Spokane Symphony Orchestra, and they are grateful for the ongoing support this memorable event receives from the Spokane community. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim the week of November 29th through December 11th, 2022 as Christmas Tree Elegance Weeks in Spokane and invite the citizens and visitors to our grand city to join with me in this delightful celebration of the holiday season in support of the outstanding efforts of the Spokane Symphony Associates to support the Spokane Symphony Orchestra. I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of Spokane, do hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Spokane to be affixed this 11th day of November 2022. May I personally add that I am a frequent flyer. I have given y'all lots of my dollars.
Folks are winning.
And we do appreciate it. Good evening. Thank you, Councilmember Wilkerson, for that reading. Thank you, Council President Beggs and council members, and thank you to the mayor's office for this proclamation. My name is Jennifer Ogden, and it's tonight I stand before you as a volunteer with Christmas Tree Elegance and Symphony Associates. I think you all know that 40 years of support is quite a landmark, 77 years of providing a great cultural institution in this city, and for only a dollar, anybody can participate. So Christmas Tree Elegance is that place where anybody can vote early and vote often, and it's legal. And we really have a terrific symphony, and they provide our young people with their music teachers, they provide you with that gig for your wedding or your graduation or your special party. They add so much to the cultural life and economic life of our city. So thank you for your support. Come on down. It starts tomorrow. The mayor will draw the, help us draw the winners on December 11th at 5:00 at River Park Square and 6:30 at Davenport. There are two luncheons, December 6th and 7th. So we hope to see you all there. Thank you very much.
See y'all at Christmas Tree Elegance.
All right. Next, we have a salutation for our former council member Steve Salvatore, and that's going to be presented by Councilmember Michael Cathcart.
Thank you, Council President. You know, Steve's tenure was short, but I think his impact was pretty significant. And so, a lot of folks really remember Steve, so I'm glad to be able to read this tonight. Remembering the life and public service of Steve Salvatore. Whereas Steve Salvatore, former Spokane City Council member, our colleague and friend, passed away on October 30th. And whereas Steve and his wife Sammy sought to find a new community to retire to and looked up and down the West Coast, ultimately falling in love with Spokane their first day here and purchasing their home along the river the very next day. Whereas Steve quickly integrated himself into the Spokane community by purchasing two offline historic buildings, the Lorraine and the Plechner, Pleknor, and bringing them back to life by creating the Spokane Entrepreneurial Center and offering his own razor-sharp business acumen to help local businesses. And whereas Steve campaigned unsuccessfully for the County Commission in 2010, placing Standing Steve posters on many vacant buildings and lots to bring awareness to the infill development that the community needed. He then ran for City Council and won, serving from 2012 to 2014. And whereas Steve loved to have fun while working and is known for flying an inflatable shark around City Hall and council chambers and originating the six-to-one vote fireball shot. And whereas Steve built bridges through diplomacy and the art of compromise, and his peers looked to him as an ally for the common good. And whereas Steve will be remembered for his incredible kindness, fun-loving spirit, and determination to make Spokane a better place, and his loss has caused deep sadness within the Spokane community. Now therefore, I, Brian Beggs, Spokane City Council President, on behalf of the community members of Spokane, hereby salute Steve Salvatore for his service to the City of Spokane.
All right.
And there is a remembrance of life, a celebration of life, this Friday. I know there's some stuff on social media about that, but if anybody needs to find out more details, contact my office, and we'd be happy to get that to you.
All right. We have some appointments for boards and commissions.
Reappointment of Anwar Pease to Spokane Human Rights Commission for three years from January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2025. Appointment of Christopher Knoll to Spokane Historic Landmarks Commission as our archaeologist from January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2025. Reappointment of Dan Feldmeyer to TPA Hotel Advisory Commission for one year from January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2023. And reappointment of Dan Zimmerer to TPA Hotel Advisory Commission for two years from January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2024.
And since he's in the room, I wanted to make sure if it was Dean Feldmeyer. All those in favor of these appointments and reappointments indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. You're all reappointed or appointed. Thanks so much for your service. And if you're interested in serving on a city board or commission, you can go to my Spokane website, Boards and Commissions. It has all of them listed, what they do, what vacancies are currently out there, what vacancies are coming up. And almost all of them, you apply to the mayor's office, and the mayor decides who to nominate, and then we, city council members, interview those nominees and approve them, just like we did right now. With that, we're moving to the consent agenda. If you would read that, Ms. Fister. We have one person signed up to testify.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, purchase from North Coast Electric Supply Spokane of three 1,200 amp transfer switches for the water department, $79,000 plus tax. Number two, contract extension with Ecovia Solutions for the subscription to Client Track software, $156,028, including tax. This software is the database that supports the city's homeless management system, HMIS. Number three, American Rescue Plan Act grant agreement with the Novia Foundation Spokane for the launch Northwest Program to support and promote addressing educational disparities, $5 million. Number four, multiple-family housing property tax exemption conditional agreements with A Spokane Housing Ventures for the future construction of approximately 10 units at parcel numbers 36331.0132 and 36331.0134, commonly known as 6208 North Lacy Street. B Skyline Homes LLC for the future construction of approximately 36 units at parcel number 35092.0609, commonly known as 1651 East Northwood Hills Drive. The conditional agreements will ultimately result in the issuance of a final certificate of tax exemption to be filed with the Spokane County Assessor's Office post-construction. Number five, report to the mayor of pending claims and payments to previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through November 18, 2022. Total $9,699,330.97 with Parks and Library claims approved of the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $9,373,472. Number six, city council meeting minutes for November 14, 2022.
And before we start testimony, because we have some testimony on this and some other ones coming up, just wanted to remind people who might be new that I'm going to call your name, and if there's more than one person, I'll call three names and have people come up to the first row so that they're ready to go as soon as the person ahead of them is done. You'll get three minutes to testify. This light will turn yellow when there's one minute left, and it'll turn red when your time's up, and I'll ask you to stop. Please direct your comments to me as the meeting chair. We ask that if you're in the audience, you do not clap or boo, even though we clapped at the beginning of the meeting. Now that we're in session, we just want to not be a distraction of anyone and let people speak their thoughts without fear or trying to earn either boos or claps. On that, we ask that you don't disparage anyone personally and avoid any profanity. And with that, we'll get started. So we have one person signed up for consent agenda. That's Teresa Simon. She's going to pass on that. So all those in favor of the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Nay? Any abstentions? All right. That is passed. And that brings us to special budget ordinances.
Ordinance C 36329, amending ordinance number C 36161, passed by the City Council, December 13, 2021, and entitled. An ordinance adopting the annual budget of the City of Spokane for 2022, making appropriations to various funds of the City of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage. And declaring an emergency and appropriating funds in. Golf Fund, number one, increase appropriation by $300,000. Two of the increased appropriation, $100,000 is provided solely for fuel, fertilizer, and other operating supplies. Three of the increased appropriation, $100,000 is provided solely for capital. Four of the increased appropriation, $100,000 is provided solely for repairs and maintenance. A, this is an increase to the overall appropriation level in the golf fund. This action arises from inflationary cost increases in supplies, fuel, and capital expenditures.
And before I invite people up, just to note that these funds were collected by golfers. They don't impact the general fund. They're not available for other city services. But the four people we have signed up are Sunshine Wigan, James Earl, Teresa Simon, and Teresa Anderson. Sunshine, if you're going to want to testify? Okay. Oh, you said that. I'm sorry. Thanks. James Earl, come on up. And after James is Teresa if she wants, and then Terry Anderson.
Evening. Evening. And I'm James. So I'm looking through this, and a big thing I kind of want to point out is we have $100,000 here, $100,000 here. What about water for this golf course? But also, what about water for later on, say summertime, when we are facing extreme heat? So I'm just going to kind of keep this short, sweet, to the point. Can we afford this? Can we really afford this? Because if we can't, then maybe we can, like, shut down the golf course for a little bit during the summer when it's 120, and we're really working on trying to get water resources for everybody. So that's all I'll say about that.
Thanks, James. Teresa Simon, and after Teresa, Terry Anderson.
I think if the golfers want to golf, they should pay to golf, and they should pay enough for the water to golf, and they should pay enough for the golf balls and the people at the golf park. I don't really feel like funding them. I've never been on a golf cart, golf course, golf cart, whatever. I don't think it's paramount for our city to pay for that, so.
Thanks, Teresa. And Terry Anderson.
Hi. I hope I'm speaking in the right section. I'm on the Board of Directors for Greater Spokane Progress, who has made some recommendations on the budget, and I was asked to come.
So this isn't the budget hearing?
Oh, this is not?
No.
Okay.
All right. That's all right. But we've got you signed up for that. All right. Any council commentary? Councilmember Kinnear.
Yeah. I'm not a golfer. Full disclosure. Never played golf, probably never will. But I will say that this, golfers fund this, so this is not the taxpayers funding this. The golfers are paying for this, so it's not coming out of your tax dollars.
Any other comments? Councilmember Bingle.
I am an avid golfer, and I'll just echo what you, what you said. Yeah, it's, it's people like me who pay to play golf that are, that are funding this, and it's, it's pretty desperately needed. I'm on the park board, and, you know, we're presented with all the golf, you know, capital needs. It, it needs to be done.
All right. Prepare to vote. All right. That passes seven to zero. And that gets us, we have one resolution tonight.
Resolution 2022-100, joint resolution with Spokane County in the matter of authorizing the Spokane Airport Board to purchase property located on Spokane County Assessor Tax Parcel Number 14011.1501, comprising of approximately 3.42 acres of land located at 11208 West Electric Avenue.
All right. We have one person, Teresa, doesn't want to testify. Any council commentary? All right. Prepare to vote. All right. That passes seven to zero. That gets us to first reading ordinances. If you could go ahead and read both of them titles, we have people signed up to testify.
Okay. Ordinance C 36330, establishing a local program for assisting landlords and tenants in Spokane enacted in new chapter 10.57 and new section 7.08.145 and 7.08.150, and amending section 7.08.139 and 08.01.160 of the Spokane municipal code. Ordinance C 36331, relating to regulation of food delivery platform fees, adopting a new chapter 10.57 of the Spokane municipal code. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
And one thing I wanted to point out that we realized today is that both of them are adopting a new section 10.57, so we will correct that before it comes up to a final vote. So we have several people signed up. 25 people signed up to testify on one or the others. If you're going to testify, you can testify on just one or both of them, but you have three minutes for total tonight. And the first three people that I have would be, Ryan Lewis would be first. Ryan, if you want to come up. And then after, Ryan Clayton McFarland, and then Darren Watkins. So you two are on deck in the front row here. All right. Welcome.
Hi there. Thank you for hearing me out tonight. I just want to point out the glaring issues with the landlord-tenant ordinance. This will be destructive for the multifamily industry. Myself, as a landlord, I've been in the industry for 11 years in the commercial and residential side of things, most recently in the residential side. And this is going to create a lot of problems. This achieves nothing. I'm going to focus on the universal background check situation. We don't even know what's in the criteria that the city is proposing. You're jumping ahead of things. You're not telling the people that are providing housing for the people of Spokane what they are going to be dealing with as far as rental criteria. And we, we need those, something that we need to know. Just pass it to find out what's in it. Situation is just not going to work. We have several issues as well with the fees that are going to be charged. Again, we don't know. You haven't told us. We don't know what we're going to be investigated on, when we're going to be investigated. For the most part, landlords are very fair. We are fair, and you are doing nothing but creating an issue for good landlords, and you're also making it more difficult for good tenants to be good tenants. We don't have any, we don't have any information. It's cryptic at best, and before we proceed with any universal background check, we need to know what's in it. I understand that we have had three years of talks, of meetings and whatnot, and whoever you've been talking to over the past three years have been the wrong people. So there are plenty of industry experts that would like to weigh in on this, and at this point, it's something that, it shouldn't be voted on so quickly. We have no idea what you're proposing. Again, cryptic at best. It needs to be looked at. It's going to be a major problem for the City of Spokane and the multifamily housing crisis that we're already in. It's only going to do more damage. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Ryan. Clayton McFarland, after Clayton, Darren Watkins, and then John Alder.
Good evening, City Council. Council President Beggs, thank you for this opportunity. My name's Clayton McFarland. Been here before, City of Spokane resident and president-elect of Boma Spokane, which stands for the Building Owners and Managers Association. I'm also a commercial, commercial and leasing manager for Good Allen Barbieri Company, a firm founded here in Spokane 85 years ago. For some background, G&amp;B manages 6.25 million square feet of real estate, which includes 715 units of affordable housing and 1,135 units of market-rate apartments, and then a great deal of retail office, medical, and industrial properties. Ordinance C 36330 allows for universal background checks and credit checks that have to be accepted by landlords. These background checks will be good for 60 days, and they'll only check for criminal history within one year, except for crimes of sex and violence. The universal background checks outlined in the legislation are to be decided by an advisory work group, which we don't know how that is made up of. If the landlord would like to conduct their own background or credit checks, they can no longer charge the applicant to do so. This ordinance requires business licenses for all landlords, and for the purpose of this paragraph, this is a quote, "A single registrant that is a business of renting more than three residential property units in Spokane is required to register each residential property unit in excess of three units." The ordinance also requires property owners to obtain business licenses for being a landlord to complete mandatory online training credits. That includes cryptic information about new code enforcement and how the city will conduct investigations. It establishes a code enforcement fund, which will be 75% of the fees received from business licenses. This seems like it'll just go to code enforcement's bottom line. Establishes a rental property mitigation fund, that'll be 10% of the fees received from the business licenses by the city, and how these funds will be decimated are still unclear, but will only apply to tenancy involving government or nonprofit-operated programs to provide low-income individuals. This also establishes legal services and a relocation fund, where the City of Spokane would invest in attorney services for tenant legal services, meaning that the landlords are paying to sue themselves. These additional costs place a burden on landlords, whether it's the additional business license fees or otherwise, that will be eventually passed along to tenants. These additional costs to management companies reporting to the city will burden these firms and be passed along to tenants. If there's an opportunity to be part of the work group that's been mentioned, that quote has equal representation from landlords and tenants, I know that Good Allen Barbieri Company and a number of associations in this chamber would be willing to participate, but were not aware of this proposal until two weeks ago, despite being in the works for years. Most landlords in Spokane aren't large corporate interests. Most are small mom-and-pop investors who cashed out their retirements in order to buy property. We take issue with the council telling these folks, who often live at the properties that they bought, that they must essentially rent to anyone and limit how far background checks can go. Affordable and subsidized housing already has screening criteria.
Clayton, we're at the end of your three minutes for tonight, but you can come back next week, because we're having a vote next week. Thanks for coming down.
history within one year, except for crimes of sex and violence. The universal background checks outlined in the legislation are to be decided by an advisory work group, which we don't know how that is made up of. If the landlord would like to conduct their own background or credit checks, they can no longer charge the applicant to do so. This ordinance requires business licenses for all landlords, and for the purpose of this paragraph, this is a quote, "A single registrant that is a business of renting more than three residential property units in Spokane is required to register each residential property unit in excess of three units." The ordinance also requires property owners to obtain business licenses for being a landlord to complete mandatory online training credits. That includes cryptic information about new code enforcement and how the city will conduct investigations. It establishes a code enforcement fund, which will be 75% of the fees received from business licenses. This seems like it'll just go to code enforcement's bottom line. Establishes a rental property mitigation fund, that'll be 10% of the fees received from the business licenses by the city, and how these funds will be decimated are still unclear, but will only apply to tenancy involving government or nonprofit-operated programs to provide low-income individuals. This also establishes legal services and a relocation fund, where the City of Spokane would invest in attorney services for tenant legal services, meaning that the landlords are paying to sue themselves. These additional costs place a burden on landlords, whether it's the additional business license fees or otherwise, that will be eventually passed along to tenants. These additional costs to management companies reporting to the city will burden these firms and be passed along to tenants. If there's an opportunity to be part of the work group that's been mentioned, that quote "has equal representation from landlords and tenants," I know that Goodell &amp; Barbieri Company and a number of associations in this chamber would be willing to participate, but were not aware of this proposal until two weeks ago, despite being in the works for years. Most landlords in Spokane aren't large corporate interests. Most are small mom-and-pop investors who cashed out their retirements in order to buy property. We take issue with the council telling these folks, who often live at the properties that they bought, that they must essentially rent to anyone and limit how far background checks can go. Affordable and subsidized housing already has screening criteria.
Clayton, we're at the end of your three minutes for tonight, but you can come back next week, because we're having a vote next week. Thanks for coming down. Darren Watkins, and then after Darren, John Alder, and then, I think, Andrew Rolls.
Hello, Darren Watkins. I live in the City of Spokane. I'm also a member of the Spokane Association of Realtors. We're here tonight to talk about what the impact of this legislation will be. In 2020, we did, we brought to the attention of this board this study done by a professor of economics at Whitworth, that said that if the city ordinances were passed, 80% of small landlords would be selling their property. Since that time, we have seen a reduction in this town of 8% to 10% per year of small landlords. That's units that own five properties or less, not five units, five properties. Our concerns is that when we start talking about this broad legislation, the fear is, are we gonna lose housing stock? We also knew from this study that 91% would raise their rents. So right off the bat, you're going to raise rents for every tenant. The concern we have is what does this do? The purpose of license registration is to identify the bad actors. We already know who those are. From the complaint system and the legislation that's already on the books, we know who the bad actors are. Why hasn't anything changed? Because you do not have the enforcement officers available to do the work to enforce the code we already have. How will adding more code help those problems? The challenge that we also see here is that some of the other areas, the city mitigation fund, the legal services and relocation funds, those already exist at the state. I haven't seen a budget impact number. What does that look like on how to hire someone to manage these funds? Let's forget that there can be duplicity by tenants or landlords filing for both funds for relief, yet in 60 days, we're gonna know exactly how much money the state is going to put towards this effort. Now, last time I checked, I heard your budget hearings. I don't know that you have a lot of surplus to be throwing extra money at services already being provided. The last area is on the proactive inspections. Interesting idea, unfortunately unconstitutional, and won't be allowed. There's a lot of case law already on the books for those areas. So let's do this. Let's consider going after the bad actors. Let's add penalties and provisions that go after the ones we already know about, add enforcement officers to be able to deal with the ones we haven't even talked to. And here's a novel idea I brought back to you because it's being considered by many cities across the country. Move your code enforcement into law enforcement. It changes the direction, it changes the strategy, and it aligns them with pre-existing resources. So for those areas, we'd like to bring those to your attention. Our concern is that this legislation, as I guess, will in fact cost everyone and not really help anyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Teri. John Alder, after John, Andrew Rolls, and then Chris Batten.
Hello, my name is John Alder. Although I am a recent homeowner, I was a renter for 43 years, and I know all about the bad actors and stuff that revolve in landlord business. Excuse me. As you can tell, I'm here to speak on C 36330. The three things I'm most concerned with are landlords requiring license, landlord registry, and universal background. The other things I'll need more time to study, and I will speak on next week. First, the business license. What makes landlords think they don't need a business license? Even my little violin works up there, which does one person fixing violins has a business license. So does every other business on Garland and Hamilton Avenue, any small business, they have a business license. So wake up landlords, it's time to get a license. Now, and we also have an ABA and AMA, helps lawyers and doctors respond responsibly for their business. A landlord registry would help landlords and tenants find responsible, conscientious landlords. Last but not least, is the universal credit check with a small fee for copies. We already are eating 50% to 75% of people's salaries for rent, damage deposits almost as much as one month's rent. $50 for every application fee is crippling the renter cost. How about one-time $50 with $5 any copies that be made afterwards? It's more than sufficient to cover application costs. We must stop economic evictions and create responsible, reliable landlords who are concerned for the health of their tenants. Thank you.
Thanks, John. And then Andrew Rolls, after Andrew, it's Chris, and then Derek. I'm not quite getting it, Bazziatis perhaps, from the Washington Hospitality Association. Welcome, Andrew.
Yes, thank you, Council President, members of council. I'm Andrew Rolls with the Downtown Spokane Partnership. On behalf of the DSP, I'm here this evening to share our concerns that the residential landlord-tenant ordinance will increase expenses and add additional obstacles to adding more for-rent housing. DSP's Board of Directors recently restated its housing priorities with the adoption of a 2023 policy platform that supports housing development in downtown of all types and at all price points. This has to be a key priority for the continued health and vitality of downtown, and demand for housing in downtown is vastly outstripped supply, resulting in near-zero vacancy rates. As you know, this is what's occurring countywide. Increasing costs and adding to the regulatory requirements of an already heavily regulated industry will have direct impacts on monthly rents, and we're concerned that it will ultimately increase rental rates as landlords cannot afford new costs. Many are still navigating years of not collecting rent due to more local moratoriums on the pandemic. Additionally, the creation of a new background check and credit check can create extensive amounts of uncertainty. We have heard from DSP members who are concerned that the changes to the credit and background checks are going to lead to apartments that are harder to manage, and more importantly, are that much less safe for tenants who are currently residing in downtown's apartments. We were limitedly involved in the working groups several years ago, but did not have the opportunity to provide feedback on the ordinance coming before you tonight. Much has changed in the last two years. The impacts of the pandemic to residential landlords have been tremendous. We urge you to consider a focus on better enforcing existing laws rather than adding new regulations, which will likely only make the problem it is trying to solve worse. And to close, we do applaud the Work Council and the Support Council has given to programs like the multifamily tax exemption, which is in very high demand and heavily used, and Work Members of Council are doing currently to make state-authorized surface lot tax benefit more effective for Spokane, as well as efforts to raise the overregulation of the condo market at the state level. By focusing on expanding the supply, these are the kinds of efforts that will make a real difference for downtown's renters and condo buyers, and we encourage your continued focus on programs and initiatives like these. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. And then we've got Chris Batten, and then Derek, and then James Earl.
Good evening, Council. My name's Chris Batten. I hope you all had a great Thanksgiving and welcome back. I'm here this evening representing my family, my partners. We own a number of rental units, particularly in the downtown area. This particular issue was brought up and debated, I believe it was back in the end of 2019, early in 2020, prior to COVID. And unfortunately, this is the first that we've heard of it in over two years. And why this would be dusted off today as proven fact in science, and we're ready to go with this, has been fully debated, is beyond me. Back when it was debated, my recollection was that the good majority of landlords were basically prohibited from participating in this conversation. And I think to brush it off today and suggest that we've all agreed to this and we're just gonna sign it off and move forward is unreasonable at best. This ordinance does nothing to provide relief in the current housing crisis and very well may cause more damage than good. Many smaller landlords will be forced out of business, causing them to sell their rentals and thereby losing valuable inventory, while others will raise their rents to offset the administrative and actual costs of enforcing this ordinance. Unfortunately, I do not believe that this will help anyone and does not provide relief to the overburdened housing market. Again, I would ask you to vote no for this ordinance and consider revisiting it and bringing it back and having a vibrant and transparent discussion, allowing all parties to participate in the conversation. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Next is Derek, and then James Earl, and then Justin Heller.
Good evening, and it's Bazziatus.
Okay.
But no, no, don't worry about it. That's, you're not the only person.
Thanks.
Council President Beggs and City Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. First off, I have spoken with most of you, either in person or via email. I want to say the situation weighs very heavy on my heart, being born and raised in Spokane in the hospitality industry my entire life. For the record, my name is Derek Bazziatus. I own and operate two restaurants and a third-party delivery company in Cheney, Washington. I'm not here for me, my businesses, this ordinance wouldn't do anything for. I'm here representing the Washington Hospitality Association as the Board Chair, and representing the hundreds of local members in Spokane that are struggling to get out of the COVID pandemic. One of the biggest struggles right now is to present the big three companies, which control 96% of the third-party market. This ordinance is an issue of setting boundaries between industries, and frankly, the hospitality industry is getting taken advantage of. In conclusion, I'm here asking you for your vote in support of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks so much for coming down, Justin. And, excuse me, Derek, sorry, but just, James is next, and then Justin, and then Jim Reddington.
Good evening. So first thing I want to point out, reading about the ordinance about the tenant rights, is look at me compared to the previous people that stood up here. I'm gonna take off my coat. See how I'm dressed? We clearly have a class war going on here that is kind of being done with landlords that, you know, I want to live, but rent got jacked up. I'm making an income, awesome, my rent's gonna go up. Minimum wage goes up, guess what? Rent's gonna go up. Landlords are being capitalists in this case. And yeah, we need accountability, we do need this, because this is gonna account for that. This is gonna account for the slumlord that decides to raise rent but doesn't change anything. This is gonna account for the rental registry that now this place has to be inspected and fit for human occupation, not for a dog, not for somebody who you think will live in there and, you know, no, a human, somebody with a beating heart. I'm gonna double deposit. I spoke on it a couple months ago. I think it's still happening, and it's still being discriminatory, so please look into that. This should be a part of this, because we should not be, whenever there's a double deposit, it needs to be heavily explained, because again, I don't want to pay 1,300 because my credit score is below 600. How is that gonna help? Well, if you can't tell me, then I shouldn't be charged for it. And going back to accountability, can even half the landlords here today spell that? Do they know what that means? Do they know quality assurance? Are they, do they know? I'm kind of lost, because what I'm hearing is, I don't want to do any much more work. Well, the fees and everything can be covered. The officers that need to be covered for this can be covered. We can get the money for it. We can probably get the money from maybe the lack of accountability that's now gonna come up, and all those fees can probably pay for those officers. So it's time to do more work and accountability and account for those slumlords and landlords that are currently basically making us work to live. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Justin Heller, after Justin, Jim Reddington, and then Robin Bernhardt.
I agree with some of the people, I don't agree with some of the people. I think the government takes too much. I think the government is way too in the business of telling us what to do and how to do it. I think in this day and age with social media, good landlord or bad landlord, they're gonna get sussed out, just like a good or bad tenant. I mean, any landlord can now go on social media and go, well, I don't like that guy, and they'll never know. But you can, if you have a, you know, an obscene picture or someone, you know, something that's distasteful on your Facebook page, landlord can figure it out really quickly. It's not too hard. So I think the government should get out of the business of telling us what to do, get out of the business of telling landlords what to do, and stop taxing us so damn much.
Thanks, Justin. Jim Reddington, after Jim, Robin Bernhardt, and then Kathleen Michaels, I believe.
My name is Jim Reddington. Thank you for the opportunity to come down tonight. My wife and I have 15 rental units here in the City of Spokane, and I'm also a board member for the Washington Landlord Association. You know, one of the worst things that we can do in a housing crisis, and we have a crisis, and it's a supply crisis, it has nothing to do with we need more regulation, it has to do with we need more supply, because there's more demand than we have supply. And there was a report that was delivered to this council five or six years ago that said exactly that, and nothing has changed, it's only gotten worse. And so if you go to the store and you have to buy groceries, and the price of your groceries has gone up, well, fertilizer's gone up, and the cost of feed's gone up, and the cost of diesel fuel's gone up, let's just regulate farming and regulate transportation. Do you think that's gonna bring the cost down? No way. We need to bring a supply into the market so that there's enough supply, adequate supply for the demand. None of these provisions in this bill are gonna do that. You have mandatory inspections, which the bill claims there's not gonna be a cost to the landlord. Well, when the cost, when the city realizes what the cost of that program is, where does that, where does that cost continue to come from? Does that get passed on? We have a, we have a door fee, that's a cost. Landlords are gonna raise their prices because they have to, because we're gonna regulate them into it. I don't think that's fair for the tenants, and it's gonna hurt every single tenant in this city, including the ones that came here to speak tonight. I don't think I need to get into the individual pieces, which I was going to, because I think other folks have done it very eloquently. Thank you very much for your time, and I urge you to take action, which will actually help tenants without hurting the landlords.
Thanks for coming down, Jim. Robin Bernhardt.
Hi.
Hi, Robin. After Robin is Kathleen, and then Dean Feldmeyer.
My name's Robin Bernhardt, and I'm gonna give you some titles that really mean a whole bunch of nothing. I'm in the restaurant business and have been for 27 years. I'm the Vice President of Operations for Landmark Restaurants, which have the Two Onion Restaurants, the one up north, and the One Downtown, and the Two Frankstiners, the one up north and the one downtown. So I also am on the board for the Washington Hospitality Association and have been back and forth on that association for many, many years in the state of Washington. So what I want to talk about is obviously the third-party delivery fee cap that is being presented and talked about. So restaurants continue to see pressures from all different sides. It just is nonstop, even with the pandemic. It's labor, it's food cost, it's supply chain, it's all of those things, and we're used to the juggling act. I mean, that's something that we're actually very good at. Right now, though, we're juggling that highest-ever inflation on food cost, the supply chain piece, you know, makes that even more difficult, and then the labor situation. So not just do we have high cost of labor, yes, but do we have enough labor to even do the job? So over the pandemic, you know, this is kind of the big piece of this, is that restaurants in Washington State have averaged over $160,000 in debt over the last couple of years. So trying to figure out how to pay that back, plus turn a profit for the future, is what's at stake right now. So rebuilding that business means that we have to figure out a way. So, and the math has to add up. So currently, the cost of labor in a restaurant is about 30%. The cost of food in a restaurant is about 30%. And then if we're costing out delivery fees from third-party delivery services that we want to use is another 30%. So with those things, the math just doesn't add up, and we just need some help, and would really, really appreciate your consideration for capping the third-party delivery fees for restaurants. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Robin. Kathleen, and after Kathleen, Dean Feldmeyer, and then Tisha Goodman.
My name is Kathleen Nichols, and I own River City Management. I've been in property management since 1996, and I've seen a huge amount of changes that have been required of us as landlords to provide tenants safe and affordable housing. One of the things I want to talk about is a universal credit check. We have on the back of our applications that we are required to have what the screening criteria is for tenants. It says that they have to have good credit, that they can't have an eviction that's less than seven years old, that they can't have any collections or judgments from another property management. They continue to fill out these applications, turn in their application fees, my office charges $45, to screen them. It's specifically stated right there what would be grounds for denial. If they continue to go and fill out applications, and every property manager in Spokane has to have that on their application, what the screening criteria is. So if they continue to fill out those applications, pay those fees, when they already know that they're gonna be declined because they have those things on their, on their credit report, that's on them. I don't see how a universal credit screening is going to solve that problem for these applicants that aren't qualified. Universal screening's not gonna solve the issue for tenants Universal screening's not going to solve the issue for tenants that aren't qualified because they don't know how to pay their bills, be responsible tenants, not cause damage to owners. The other thing I want to speak about that has been talked about before is inspections. When we do lease renewal with tenants, we do inspections annually every year. We go into every one of those properties, we make sure that they're maintained, we make sure that the, that there's not things that need to be addressed for those tenants. It's been testified already this evening that there are bad landlords in Spokane, Washington. They're complained about. I think the city council needs to go after, or code enforcement, those landlords that are bad. Don't punish the owners that have their properties managed by professional property managers, Goodell &amp; Barberry, MT Management, River City Management. There's thousands of us out there that do our job, make sure that our tenants are taken care of, that their work orders are addressed, and that they're living in a safe environment, and that their property is taken care of. Thank you for hearing me.
Thanks for coming down. Dean Feldmeyer, after Dean, Tisha, and then Alexander Scott.
Thank you very much, council president, council members. I'm here to give a little bit of, first of all, I'm Dean Feldmeyer, live in the city, operate the Doubletree by Hilton Spokane City Center, and we operate two restaurants there, but I don't have a dog in the fight with the fees, the delivery fees, but I do think that this is an opportunity for the city to intervene. Generally, I'm not in favor of cities or the government managing, overly managing these things, but make no mistake, the delivery companies, delivery, major national delivery companies are really marketing organizations, and they don't have a lot of investment in the community. They pay their delivery drivers pretty low wages. At the same time, the owners of restaurants, our local restaurants, really add to the fabric in our community, and it, it's really important, as Derek pointed out, people have really incurred a lot of debt over the last couple of years. So I'm just here to stand in support of the other restaurants. Like I said, we don't do delivery, a lot of delivery, a little bit of delivery, but it is necessary to protect the restaurants, to continue to allow them to flourish, and 15% is a very, very reasonable, very generous, and in fact, the, the margins for restaurants are so low that 15% is really very generous for the delivery companies. So I just encourage you to, in this case, act and cap those, those fees at a point that is reasonable for the other restaurant operators, because they've got a lot of investment in the community, a lot of restaurant, a lot of costs, rather, that have gone up recently, and I think it'll really help them out. Thank you.
Thanks, Dean. Tisha Goodman, and then Alexander Scott, and then Brian, I want to say Gutman, but I might be misreading that. So Brian, I hope you'll know who you are. Go ahead, Tisha.
Thank you, council president and fellow council members for allowing me the time to share my concerns related to the landlord-tenant ordinance. My name is Tisha Goodman, and I'm a rental property owner and the general manager of Rockwood Property Management, responsible for 1,200 rental units in Spokane, of which half are in the city of Spokane, and will be impacted by this ordinance. I've been following this proposed ordinance over the past several years, and I have spoken in opposition in previous council meetings. I'm concerned that landlords have not been fairly represented in your discussions regarding this, this ordinance. It goes without saying, as others have said, that we have a housing shortage in Spokane, and this has caused challenges related to affordability and homelessness. I would also agree that there are a small percentage of landlords that do not follow current landlord-tenant laws and/or fair housing laws. That being said, creating new laws, as others have mentioned, especially laws that are not well-defined or defined at all, will not, will not solve the issues related to the small percentage of landlords that do not follow current law. In addition, this ordinance will not solve our housing crisis. I believe these ordinance will unfairly add additional costs, thus flowing down to the tenants and increasing rental rates. I believe it will also drive property owners of small projects and/or single-family rental units to sell, thus converting a percentage of those to owner-occupied units. The property owners that I represent took a very conservative approach to renewal increases over the past year. In general, we stuck to 5% of, on our renewal increases, while market rate were, rents in the door were increasing in high double digits. And we did that after not being able to raise rents through COVID. So, so that's unheard of, and we have 600-plus units in the city of Spokane. Based on this ordinance, we'll probably reconsider that, because we don't know how this is going to impact us financially. My concerns related to the universal background checks are similar to what we've heard from others testify. How do you vote on something when you don't clearly understand what the criteria is that you're presenting to landlords and to your, and to potential tenants? You say an advisory group will decide on this content, but we don't feel like we've been, you know, offered a seat at the table thus far, so how can we be assured that we'll get the opportunity to share what we believe should be, you know, considered as part of those background checks? As a landlord, it is our duty to ensure that through credit checks and background checks, there were housing tenants that will be good neighbors to good tenants that are living in our properties, and to tenants that will abide by the lease terms. If universal background checks do, do not provide us with the information we require to make those decisions, we will have to do one of two things. One, make a decision based on this criteria that may not give us good information, thus putting people in properties next door to good tenants, causing our good tenants to have to live next to people who are causing problems. Did I run out of time?
You did. But thank you so much for coming down. Yeah.
Can you please share those other comments to my email? Can you please share the rest of your comments to my email? Thank you.
All right. Alexander Scott, and then Brian, and then Terry Anderson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, councilors. Thank you for allowing me to, to make comments regarding the rental housing to this council meeting. My name is Alexander Scott. I invest in residential, residential housing, I rehab houses, I rent properties, and I'm, and I'm a business consultant. I currently, currently own six properties in Spokane and 10 properties out of state. All our Spokane rentals, I follow income and at-risk people. My family are essentially mom and dad investors. I'm, I am socially conscious and a pragmatic investor in housing, and advise clients and con, and colleagues on how to invest for acceptable returns with regards to acceptable risk and returns. I have grave, grave concerns regarding the direction council is taking, which has and will deter investment in rental housing in Spokane. In Spokane, the majority of housing for at-risk and low-income is provided by mom and dad investors. In 2016, I participated in the city's rental housing research stakeholder group, and I wrote a report for that research group. Since that research program, and in 2016, I and fellow investors have become, become very concerned at this disregard for investors' concerns, the increased risk legislation and compliance that's passed on to landlord, the disregard for economic issues that relate, as they relate to landlords, and the new regulations and costs which are imposed on landlords. Since 2016, I and three other investors, investors have sold rentals in Spokane, and we have moved elsewhere. That, that group of four people now own 125 properties outside of Spokane. I would prefer to live in, to, to invest in Spokane, however, the proposed changes currently being discussed will continue the flight of capital and investments from Spokane. I urge council to consider the impact on, on investors in its deliberations. Thank you.
Thanks, Alexander. And again, I can't quite read the last name, but it's Brian G., is there a Brian G? Come on up, Brian. And then Terry Anderson, and then Jason, I'm going to say Kazwork or Kazurick, but Jason K. Hi, Brian.
Hey, hello, thanks for having me. I'm here to-
And tell us your name, especially since I couldn't quite read it.
All right. My name's Brian Gwin.
Gwin, okay, so got it.
I'm here to represent the landlords and tenants. I mean, it doesn't matter which side you're on, they, they should be called residents, not tenants, but I don't believe the ordinance that you guys are putting forward is in the best effort for the residents and the landlords. I think the business license aspect is okay, but I think a lot of landlords operate their business through a property management company that already has a business license. So that should be accounted for in some aspects of, of what's going on there. The, the property management company owns a business, they have a business license, they're, they're approved by the state to operate property management business, and if they're operating that for somebody else, that's the name of the game, I guess, is the point. And I, I agree with the last gentleman that spoke. We operate in Nevada, Idaho, and Washington, and all of our Washington investors are moving to Nevada and Idaho due to, that started pre-COVID, but with words, with me emailing out this proposal tonight, or yesterday, I've had five investors call me saying they're ready to sell and move over to Idaho or Nevada. So if we want to help low-income residents, we need to look at different solutions that keep our investors here. I think the inspections that are done by Section 8 are done really well, and how can, why can't we add on to that program that they offer currently with the, the housing? So that's my take on it, and I hope you guys table this, maybe bring some groups together that are on each side and come up with a better solution. Appreciate your efforts, but I think this needs to be set aside for a little bit and go from there. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Brian. Terry Anderson, and then Jason, and then Teresa Simon.
My name's Terry Anderson, and I'm the director for the Spokane office for the Tenants Union of Washington State, and I'm the statewide policy director. And I first want to say that we would have had way more tenants here if we'd have known that this would have been the first reading tonight. I'm on the housing, the sub, Housing Action Subcommittee for City Council, and we were not notified that this would be the first reading tonight. I read about it in The Range, and then I was contacted by some reporters, so I had absolutely no time to organize tenants to come and speak. And tenants obviously do not have the same lives that landlords have, where they can concentrate their work on their business and come here on a moment's notice to testify. That just is not true with tenants. Tenants are working, and they are juggling, and they have been going through a, a lot of stress and a lot of turmoil for the last few years, and coming to a city council meeting is not something they could do on such short notice. So I just want to say, we would have appreciated more notice. And I know that this is a first reading, so we're not actually debating the, the subject, so I don't really want to get into all of the merits, but I do want to thank you, because tenants have been asking for protections for at least five years. We have been engaged in at least three different landlord-tenant forums, processes, discussions, and work groups, and we have had participation by landlords and tenants. It's harder to get tenant participation because of what I just told you, but I also want to remind you that half of the population of Spokane are renters. They rent their homes. Half of those renters are rent-burdened. They pay more than 30% of their monthly income on rent. And half of those rent-burdened tenants pay more than 50% of their monthly income in rent. That means that one quarter of all the renters in the city of Spokane pay more than one-half of their monthly income in rent. We have a housing crisis, and, and it's not going to be solved by arguing and bickering and telling each other's point of view. You can't single out, quote, "bad landlords" from, quote, "good landlords." We operate as a hotline for tenants to call. I couldn't tell, name one single landlord. We get hundreds of landlords that are, that tenants call us about. We get at least 15 calls a week, 20 calls a week. They're not all from the same landlord, they're from all different landlords. Every landlord should be, should comply with all of the same rules, and this notion of being able to somehow separate bad landlords from good landlords, I don't even use the term "bad landlords" and "good landlords." I've heard that more tonight. But I, I, I just want to urge tenants to contact our office. We are having a meeting on Thursday for tenants to learn more about these ordinances so that they can testify next week.
We're done. Next is Jason, and if you could introduce yourself, because I couldn't quite get your name.
My name is Jason Kazmark. I'm a landlord in Spokane, and in 2020, I took an $80,000 loss due to COVID from renters coming in and just moving out on me. 2021, I took $45,000 loss. This year, I'm projected to do about $35,000 loss for the same reasons. 2021, I purchased a four-unit apartment building in the Hilliard area. I was hoping to have fairly inexpensive rent due to code enforcement and, and fines and stuff like that. I tried to get a permit in September. I didn't, that wasn't issued until March, and I worked on the property during that time, so they fined me $1,400. All right? So that was another loss for me. I wanted to rent the place out for about $800 a unit. Now I have to put in a sprinkler system that's going to cost me about $45,000. So that's what I'm running into as a landlord. You know, the code is doing it to me, and I'm still going to rent people, it's just going to be more money. And I just want to say that your, these ordinances and, and it's going to just hurt everybody in the long run, not just the tenant, the landlord also. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Jason. Teresa Simon, and then I'm going to go to Christian Rose, and then we're going to do some phone and video testimony. Hi, Teresa.
Hi. The first thing I'd like to say is that if I was going to pick a landlord in here that I'd let manage my property, it'd be Kathy Nichols. So there you go. She does actually inspect her properties. She does care about her tenants, and you know, I wouldn't say that, I wouldn't let somebody manage my properties. So Uber Eats, I asked my husband when the last time we ordered food in, and neither of us know. We don't expect the luxury. You start your car, you get your gas, you insure your vehicles, you drive, and you pick it up if you want it. So, so what if it's 30%? Sorry, that's business. You're not buying the gas. I think that they should have to make some sort of disclosure, what that looks like, that would be something that could be done. Okay, so, applications. My applications come in through a mail drop. They come in by email. Sometimes I meet the tenants, sometimes I don't. My tenants come by social workers who ask me to take them. You all know I have homeless houses. Okay, so you do a universal application, what am I supposed to do with that? I'll tell you what I do. I get on the internet and I figure it out. Do I always figure it out? Pretty much. You know, I don't have cops at my properties, I don't, I don't mean to tell you that, but I don't. They're not at my properties, and I don't want them in my house, and I don't want them in my houses, and I don't want them pulling me over like they did on October the 19th when they wrote me another DUI. Well, they didn't write it. They detained me for an hour and a half sober, and then they let me go. You're tying my hands on the homeless, by the way. The COVID has, the property at Wall and Third has four tenants in there that haven't paid rent in 18 months, and they arsoned the property, and they haven't been charged, and I've seen the video, and they know who it is. So you have 35 tenants sitting in there that have been arsoned? Arsoned. The fire department's been out, the police department's been out, the tenants are hitting the fire things, the tenants are flooding the building, they're punching holes in the walls, and they can't get them out. It's not my building. It's somebody I know. I ate 8,000 on COVID. I don't know how much they've ate in 18 months. I walked the building with code enforcement, so I'm more familiar with what's going on.
Teresa.
Barrel's 18 months for another landlord.
Teresa.
Get the fire department, the police department out there, please, let's protect the tenants.
Thanks, Teresa, for coming down. We're going to go to Christian Rose, are you here? And after Christian, then we're going to go to Jake Mason and Bob Hernan by video.
Thanks for giving me an opportunity to talk. The, the ordinance today is really not going to directly solve the problem, which is supply side, and it's actually going to, it's actually going to create a more hindrance in the market. There'll be less units available. I can really appreciate the fact that the council would take this matter seriously and look for solutions, because even though I am an operator of multifamily- Because even though I am an operator of multifamily units in the area, I do understand that we have an obligation to take care of our customers, which are the residents. And, you know, like you heard here before, most landlords feel like me. We do our job. The market dictates that we take care of our tenants, and we provide a good, a good, and a good, clean rental property. If we don't, the market tells us, and people don't rent from us. So this ordinance will harm the free market. It'll harm the supply-side. We are already one of the most heavily regulated businesses in the state of Washington. As I said, this is going to create a huge administrative burden for the city. It's going to create administrative burden for landlords and housing providers. It's going to increase costs unnecessarily and raise rental rates for tenants. Reputable landlords are already adequately incentivized to provide quality housing to tenants via the free market. The market provides the necessary motivations to landlords. We are motivated to provide clean, rent-ready units that comply with city estate codes. Substandard units simply are not going to rent to qualified applicants. For those units that fall outside of code compliance, during tenancy, there is already a safety net. Tenants, residents can call code enforcement, they can file a complaint, and code enforcement is legally obligated to investigate that. So adding an additional layer of regulation into the system is a redundancy that we don't need. With regards, I wanted to speak on the matter of the mandatory training as well. The vast majority of housing providers are educated, and they're financially sophisticated. In areas where we are deficient, we hire professionals, such as property managers and attorneys, to ensure we comply with housing laws. Requiring landlords to take a multiple-hour mandatory training is an onerous and unnecessary burden that will not include the quality of housing for residents. Additionally, there is a limit on what could be taught during that time, a surface-level course.
We're at the end of your time for tonight.
I'm so sorry.
But you can come back. No, thank you for coming down. I really appreciate it.
Can you send the rest of those to my email? I'd like to hear the rest of your comments.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, and then switching to video, Jake Mason and then Bob Hernan. Jake on the line there?
Jake, you should be able to unmute yourself and turn your video on.
There you are. All right, welcome to City Council, Jake. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Council President. For the record, Jake Mason. I'm a proud resident of Spokane's beautiful and historic Browns Edition neighborhood, coming to you from Florida this evening, where it is three hours later than it is there. So I appreciate you giving me some time to speak with you tonight. Just want to be frank with you about the fact that GSI, I'm here representing Greater Spokane Incorporated, and it's over 600 members here in the Spokane region. And again, to be frank, we have members on both sides of this ordinance. And speaking with business owners across our community, I've heard a lot of differing opinions on this ordinance in particular. I think you've also heard some of the same sentiments from the folks from the Hospitality Association this evening, folks who are generally opposed to this kind of interference in the free market, but maybe have differing opinions and approaches to this. But to that, I would say that there, the issues around this kind of price control, it doesn't go away simply because we're working in a different, a different area or a different market space. The times the government has used price controls in the past has been exceedingly rare and very careful, and only to protect consumer access to critical infrastructure. And we should continue down that path when it comes to this ordinance as well, as well as working in spaces, including the restaurant and hospitality industry. This ordinance will continue to stymie innovation and competition in a space that is already fiercely competitive. I think as folks have spoken, we have three primary service providers in this space that make up about 94% of the market. But those three are fiercely competitive. I think the council has had that experience with them. None of these three providers are on the same page when it comes to this ordinance. They all offer differing service levels. They offer different POS integrations. On the merchant side, they offer different services for different prices. And if we're going to be placing price controls in this space, that's only going to stymie innovation and Spokaneites' access to new and innovative features that these folks might be able to bring to market. We may soon find ourselves, as Spokaneites, both merchants and consumers excluded, from new and innovative processes these folks might be wanting to bring to market, not only the big guys, but little guys too. So those, those are some of the issues that we have generally with price controls and with price caps in the market. I wanted to say also, Mr. Council President, that we've really appreciated the transparency from Councilmembers Oppone and Kinier. We intend to continue to be a facilitator of discussion and conversation in our community, especially in taking up Councilmember Kinier's offer for an open and extended public comment period on this ordinance. So thank you again for your time this evening, and I'll give you the rest of my time.
All right. Thanks for staying up late to participate. Bob Hernan, and, Bob, we're not seeing you necessarily, so if you could hit Raise Your Hand function on your video, if you're there. All right, we're not seeing you on video. Bob, if you're there by phone, if you want to hit star three. All right, we're not seeing Bob. So then let's move on. We've got three other people signed up by phone. Anna Powell, Dave M., and Krista Connolly. And Anna Powell, if you want to hit star three on your phone to raise your hand electronically. All right, Anna, welcome to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Hi there. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Council President Sbagh and members of the Spokane City Council. My name is Anna Powell, and I am the Government Relations Manager in the Northwest for DoorDash, currently residing in Seattle and a native of Aberdeen, Washington. Thank you for your time this evening and for the opportunity to speak about the price control legislation before you tonight. DoorDash is proud of our mission to empower local economies, and we value the merchants and dashers we work with. In Spokane, in fact, restaurants report that DoorDash and other app-based platforms have helped them expand their customer reach and grow their business. 75% of restaurants agree that DoorDash has allowed them to reach new customers. 69% of restaurants say they have acquired new dining customers through DoorDash. 65% of restaurants say they were able to increase their profits during COVID-19 because of DoorDash. And we know that the odds of staying open during COVID-19 were eight times more likely for restaurants who were on DoorDash. And finally, dashers earn nearly $24 per active hour while working in Spokane. That is why DoorDash is opposed to all permanent price control legislation, because it is both unnecessary and unconstitutional. Price control legislation would permanently rewrite contracts between two private businesses. And while policymakers have argued that temporary legislation was justified by the pandemic, no such justification can be made for permanent price controls. While DoorDash recognizes that the pandemic is not over, restaurants now have options again, including indoor dining and local delivery platforms. In fact, indoor dining restrictions were lifted in Spokane more than a year ago, and some restaurants may have even chosen to discontinue their use of delivery services. Furthermore, this legislation is unnecessary, as DoorDash and all other major delivery platforms already offer a 15% pricing plan for any small and medium-sized restaurant that wants it, not just in Spokane, but across the country. Restaurants even have the flexibility to change their plan and move between the tiers whenever they want, feedback we received and implemented in April 2021. With that, we ask the Spokane City Council to work not on a solution that is already available to restaurants, but instead work together with all stakeholders towards a solution that addresses the numerous other challenges faced by restaurants, many of which were mentioned by some of those owners here tonight, to ensure restaurants have a variety of options to power deliveries and grow their businesses without harming those very restaurants, customers, or delivery drivers who want to help. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Anna. And if you would just hit your star three, that will lower your hand. And then Dave M., if you could hit star three to raise your hand. Welcome back to City Council, Dave. You have up to three minutes.
Good evening, Council. I'm calling in tonight in opposition to Ordinance C 36331, the food delivery fees. I think this falls on the restaurants themselves. If they don't want to pay these fees, then they should, you know, get together and not pay the fees, or start their own business or whatever. But I think regulating, starting to regulate what other companies do, if they charge an exorbitant amount of money for something, they won't be in business very long. And that leads me to, who's next? Who will be regulated next? Will it be the electric company, the heating companies? I don't mean the electric companies, I mean electricians, any private business. I think that the free market needs to level this out, and that's what capitalism is all about. So I would just say, who's next on the list? Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. And if you could hit star three and lower your hand. And then Krista Connolly is our last speaker. If you could hit star three. All right, Krista, one last time, if you're there, if you want to hit star three. All right, well, either Krista or Bob, you can testify next week. That brings us to the end of first reading ordinances. We do have, I think, one hearing. And we have, if you want to read the hearing, Ms. Stratter.
H1, Continued Hearing on Proposed 2023 Budget Continued from November 21, 2022.
And then we do have one person who's signed up, Terry Anderson, on the budget.
Hi, again. I'm speaking as a board member from Greater Spokane Progress, a coalition of progressive organizations in Spokane, who's asked me to, to remind you that the Greater Spokane Progress is recommending that the budget include funding for police accountability, for equity, inclusion, and civil rights, and housing justice. And I'm going to speak on the housing justice piece. While the data on the vacancy rate in rental housing in Spokane indicates a rate of 2%, which is an indicator of a housing crisis, that vacancy rate does not actually give the number for affordable rental housing, because that rate is basically nonexistent. With nearly half of Spokane renting their homes and being rent-burdened, we would like to see some budget go to help pay landlords with rental assistance. The rental assistance that's being used now is mainly just for eviction prevention work, and it would be great if we could have rental assistance that could be proactive, that would keep tenants from receiving 14-day notices and being evicted. And I also want to remind you that there is a racial gap in home ownership, which makes 81% of black households are renters, over 60% of indigenous and people of color are renters, while only about 30% of the white households in Spokane are renters. And there is a federal law called the Fair Housing Act of 1968, which requires that we affirmatively advance fair housing. And so for those reasons, we would like to see the city of Spokane put money in the budget so that we can create housing justice and provide stability and security for renters. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Is there a motion to continue the budget hearing until December 5th?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Abstentions? All right, the budget hearing is continued, December 5th, which will be the last day of the budget hearing. We anticipate voting on a budget on December 12th. And that leads us to special considerations.
S1, Consideration of Mayor's Veto of Ordinance C 36307, Updating the Annual City of Spokane Property Tax Levy for 2023.
All right, and we don't have a public comment on considerations of vetoes, but are there council commentaries? Councilmember Cathcart.
Well, I was just hoping we could get some legal feedback, because there's been a lot of emails bouncing around with different suggestions of what the veto does or doesn't do, or what us overriding it or not overriding it would do or not do. So I just wondered if we could get some clarification on that.
I don't think you can be heard very well. Your mic's.
Can you hear me better now?
No.
Better.
Better, closer?
Oh, there, there we go.
Okay. Bear with me. I'm searching for an email.
If you look, do you have that email from?
From Mike.
Ms. Stratton that has her and Mike Piccolo's on it? That's the best email, I think.
That's the one I'm looking for. I don't remember it. Sorry.
Councilmember Stratton.
Jessica.
Jessica Stratton.
Okay, well, there's another Stratton.
Hey, Teresa, Teresa, I'm happy to talk with you after the meeting.
Okay, so Mr. Piccolo indicated that, that the mayor's veto could be read as to relate only to the 1% property tax increase. That's in Section 1A. Does that answer your question?
So it could be read or is read?
I think it, I can't give you a specific answer. I guess it depends on how you want to read it. Unfortunately, the wording from the mayor, I think, wasn't clear.
So if my interpretation is one thing, then that's my interpretation? And if it's something else, it's something else? It's just magic?
Well, I mean, if you would like me to make the final decision, then I could, but I don't think that's my role.
Okay.
I think it's up to you all as a group to decide how you want to read it.
Sure, sure. Okay, well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so my interpretation, and this is how I will interpret it, is that the mayor's intention was to veto our tax increase of 1%. And my interpretation of our action going forward is that by overriding it, if that is what we did, it would uphold the 1%, and by overturning it, it would, it would, or excuse me, if we overturned the veto, it would uphold the 1%, and if we overrode that, or upheld, then it would maintain that 1%. So my interpretation is it has nothing to do with any other aspects of this, and so I'm going to vote against overriding the veto, because I think it's important that we are standing up for our constituents, who are struggling right now, and the. And the costs, no matter how small or large, is just not something that is appropriate at this point in time. And so I am going to uphold the veto tonight.
I was just going to add, we did get an email from the mayor's budget director, and her interpretation was that the veto would reduce the 1% property tax and the 1% on the public safety personnel levy, and that it would, because it was a veto, it would not allow for the banking of that 1%, which you can do a banking of the 1%, but it wouldn't allow for that. So that's non-privileged, because it just came from the budget director. We, I did, we have heard some of us from Mr. Piccolo, but that was attorney-client confidentiality of what is out there. I would note that the mayor did a partial veto today of one, and did it, I think, the correct way, which is to make it clear, as opposed to vetoing the entire ordinance, which on its face, this did. And for myself, I really don't want to risk having access to all the levy funds that voters have approved and that we've approved in the past for public safety. And as I've also mentioned several times, for as long as I've been on the council, we've devoted the 1% to public safety vehicles. That's how we've funded that and got. That's how we've funded that and got, for a while, ahead of the curve on that. We have now gone backwards a bit in the last couple of years on that, and we have vehicles that we're trying to purchase for police this year. We can, we've ordered them, they can come in, and we've got requests from the fire department. So I believe that if we put in this, which I think the estimate was $8 per household, it will go towards that important goal that a lot of people have. With obviously any taxes, nobody wants extra expenses, but it depends on what we're getting for them. So that's my sense. I will go to Councilmember Conner, and then Councilmember.
And so I just, not that I didn't hear exactly what you said, but I want to reiterate that you're right, this is going to increase people's taxes, eight bucks a year, about 75 cents a month. And as you stated, people have told us repeatedly that public safety is a priority for them. That's what this pays for. So it is a complete conundrum for, for you.
It's really not.
Because you, you support public safety, this would diminish what we pay for. So we need to be very clear, most of this is paid by new construction. It'll be about 640,000 a year, which is six police officers or half of a fire truck, depending on how you want to split the baby. And again, it's about eight bucks a month. So I think most people would be willing to pay eight months in order to have their public safety needs met.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so just to be clear, under the Condon administration, that was the policy, and that's how they operated, they tied it to that. That has not been the case for the last three years, and there is no policy in effect right now where money from raising taxes goes just to law enforcement, capital expenses. That doesn't exist. It's just, it's budget magic, is what it is. We're trying to justify the increase in taxes. If capital is, is a priority, we find the dollars for the capital. We don't have to raise taxes. And so I just inherently disagree. I think it's just a way to justify it. I don't agree with it, I don't think it's right. And the $8 is an average. There are some that will pay more, some that will pay less, but ultimately, there is a compression effect. We're going to have a parks bond probably next year or the year after. There's going to be another school bond, there's going to be more of these. It's an, it's just this. And so while this might be this much right now from us, it's just another this much on top of this much, on top of this much, on top of, it just goes on forever. That's the problem. And right now, as we head into a recession, it's just not the right moment in time. And yes, we're not talking about the biggest bucks in the world, but it's money that we are sucking out of the economy. I believe people can use those dollars to their own benefit much better than we can. And I think that's, as we approach a recession, that's where those dollars should remain.
Other council members want to weigh in? Councilmember Wilkerson.
We are all feeling the inflation and the compression of taxes, bonds, but I saw this being fiscally prudent. We, to me, we are investing in our people, those are the people who work for the city. We gave raises to all those folks, very well deserved. Money can be used for that. Public safety, homelessness, there is, like, all of us feel in our own financial households, everything has gone up, and there is a cost to doing business to keep this city fiscally responsible. I am in support of reinstating the 1% tax. It will be challenging, but I don't want us to not reinstate the chat, the tax, and see what we would have to give up. Are the citizens ready for us to make those type of decisions, and those types of potential cuts going forward? So based on that, I will be in support of the override.
Councilmembers of Pone.
Yeah, I think, I find it deeply concerning that it's been two weeks since we passed this ordinance, and the mayor vetoed it, and we're not even sure what the veto accomplishes. The administration had time to come to us and prove to us what this veto accomplishes, and they did not do that. So Councilmember Cathcart, I appreciate your interpretation. I'm deeply concerned that we don't know what the veto does, and we have a deadline, in two days, it has to be transmitted to the county. We don't know what the county's going to do with the veto, if we were not to override this. So that means that we, the mayor has put us at risk of losing over $100 million by accidentally vetoing the whole ordinance and not knowing what to do. The mayor has essentially defunded our police and our fire departments. Council has to act to override this veto and correct the mistake, because we don't know the full implication of this. Talk about unintended consequences, seems like this is something that should have been run by legal beforehand, maybe read the whole ordinance. I don't know what the mayor was thinking when she vetoed this, but I do know that it's been two weeks since we first voted on this, and we still don't have the answers. And we could potentially risk fully funding our police and fire departments, and that's deeply concerning.
Any other council commentary? Councilmember Bingle.
I, I will join in agreement with Councilmembers of Pone on, I'm, I'm concerned with, with the uncertainty. It, it has been frustrating, I've asked a, a number of questions along these lines. Does it mean that we're actually not approving any of these levies? Some have said, well, maybe. Okay, well, is it actually that, or is it just the 1% increase of 2022 to 2023? Well, that could be it. Well, is this a partial veto? Is this a full veto? Well, it could be, it could be. For me, this is my least favorite vote I've ever taken, because I'm probably going to vote to overturn the veto. Not because I think it's a good time to raise taxes, I think it's a terrible time to raise taxes, I don't think we should be doing it in a recessionary period, but because I haven't been able to get concrete answers on to what the veto does, where, where it takes us in a city, I can't, I can't, I can't vote in good conscience to not overturn this, considering all the services that the city provides to the people. And so this is probably my least favorite vote of all time, because I just, it has been unclear to us on, on a lot. And so I won't, I won't enjoy doing this tonight, but I, for me, I, I think it's the best decision, so.
Any other comments? Councilmembers of Pone.
Yeah, I, I forgot to say, that I just feel like the mayor didn't fully think this through and think about the consequences of it. It seemed like the mayor was more concerned about playing politics and prioritizing politics over our public safety, which is what effectively happened by vetoing this.
Councilmember Bingle.
I think playing politics is blaming the mayor for everything all the time. And so, I mean, I think, I think legitimately, what the mayor was trying to do was to, was to not increase the 1% property tax. I think there's a legitimate read of that, and I think that's her genuine intentions in this, and I think a, a council such as this could interpret it that way. But it's not solely up to our interpretation, that uncertainty is the, is, is the issue for me. And so it's not the mayor's bad, and she doesn't understand things and all this kind of stuff, that's not what it is. I think there's a genuine read as to what her intentions were, there is just too much uncertainty for me.
I would just add that there's been multiple times that the mayor has not correctly done a veto. This is not just the first time. The mayor returned a law, an ordinance, the fair elections ordinance, late 10 days. So I just think it's interesting that she's not taking, doing her homework to figure out how to veto.
We understand.
And I think that's a fair critique, but to say she's playing politics, I think is a, is a, is a bad read at best.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Legal says this likely affects the 1%. I believe them. I will not support raising taxes.
Karen.
Okay.
Talk.
I just want to bite my lip. Yeah, I just, I, I, I feel bad for everybody up here that this happened, and that it, there's, it's so confusing, and there's a, there's a part of me that finds it disrespectful, that something this big comes to us, and, you know, like you said, it's, there have been no conversations, I know we've asked questions, but I, you know, when this, when this stuff comes up and it's so big, it's a big issue, it would be great to have a conversation between council members and the administration, and work together on this. I just think it's professional courtesy. So that's my frustration, is because this, we put a lot of thought, a lot of effort, we've gotten calls on both sides of the issue, and yet here we sit, and we're trying to do the best thing for the people that we represent, and yet we're, we have these kind of concerns, and I, I just, I find it just very disappointing.
Any other comments? All right, so just to be clear, a yes vote is to override the veto, and a nay vote is to uphold the veto.
Can you do that one more time?
A yes vote is to override the veto.
Okay.
And restore the ordinance. A no vote is to uphold the veto.
Yes is to override.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
That's what it's done to my brain.
All right, all right, prepare to vote. Okay, that's six to one, overrides the veto, and Ms. Fister, of course, since the county needs this right away, let me know if I need to sign something, we'll do that. That brings us to open forum. We have nine people signed up, some of them by phone and video. We'll do the in-person first. Rick Hartman Hatterbock is first up. After that, it looks like, I believe, Mrs. Michael Jones, and then Sunshine Wigan.
Greetings. This thing, this thing as loud as it gets? Okay. I was going to talk about that Arpesky Constitution that a lot of people don't like to hear about sometimes, but I decided to talk about Spokane busking instead, because I'm a busker, and so I'm going to share one of my busking songs in poetry fashion with you. And I know that Brian says we're not supposed to laugh, but she can smile. So, here we go. I woke up this morning, and opened my bedroom door, and there's a pair of engineer motorcycle boots on the floor. I peek out the window, there's a red hat with rabbit fur and a dead reindeer along the tree. I hear a knock on the front door, and there's a tall, elfish woman, she's all dressed in green, and she says, "Mr., call 911, Santa Claus is on a crime spree." And I says, "Why is that? It's not even Christmas time." She says, "Well, you made marijuana legal in your state, and we've been getting shipments of brownies up at the North Pole, and Santa ate half the shipment, and he fed the other half to the reindeer. So us Elvish people were sleeping in the sleigh, and we heard a rumble and roar that day, and we landed in your city on the way. Now Santa, he's addicted to the brownies, and he didn't have a connection, so he robbed the marijuana dispensary. He took all their suckers, all their gummy bears, all their candy, and later on that day, Santa hit a busk with his sleigh, and if you look out the window, they're hauling the reindeer away. So of Elvish people, we tied Santa to a tree, but he didn't care. He's high on the brownies. So the tall, elfish woman, all dressed in green, she says, "Mr., do me a favor, and don't give Santa any marijuana brownies." Thank you."
Thanks, Rick. And Mrs. Michael Jones, did I get that right? Yeah, thank you. And then Sunshine, and then Justin.
Hello, I am the trustee of the Jones Living Trust. On May 5 of 21, I entered a district court federal case against John Earl Jones, Robert Rowley, the Witherspoon 601 West Maine lawyers about my trust, and fired them from the operation of my trust. I don't know what they did, but they said that.
I can't hear her.
Because I didn't know how to electronically file.
Oh, can you get the microphone, pull it down a little bit, so you're speaking into it? Yeah, thanks.
They told me that if I didn't know how to electronically file, so I was disqualified. They've continued to operate my trust. On this, my biggest point on this filing was Volunteers of America, and the money that they had absconded and taken from this, my husband's heart for his widowed mother, was, this was developed in 1975 off of the original Volunteers of America, because his dad was a mason, and they came and built Grand Cooley, so they could finish that Grand Cooley dam. So when his dad died in '74, he created this for his mother, for women who, who had nobody to help them. It's no longer that, it's the dope house, and they are selling drugs out of it, and I request you give them no money. These people are gang members that are operating it. They sell drugs right there out of it. I was up there three days and watched them. They found out about this and created a scenario for me. I wish and pray that you let that go. It will be opened again, but these people are fraudulent. Also, Gooddale and Barbieri, they all left, are operating and, and, and renting my units for Robert Rowley, the Witherspoon, Garvin, Rasmus, and Winston and Kachet, and they've all moved over to Idaho. They, they all resigned when this all came out, and now they've all resigned, but they've all moved it over here to Idaho. I will be filing this tomorrow in a superior court, and I want you to hold all funds until I get it done. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming down. Sunshine Wigan, and then Justin Haller, and then Teresa Simon.
This is just something kind of educational, how, how I'm coping. I named it Bullying the Mentally Ill: My Cure. So I have borderline personality disorder, and it comes with lots of symptoms. Those of you that know me know I struggle with bullies. Someone made a post about my obesity, and some others tried breaking my mirror off my car, calling me fat, et cetera. I have even had strangers use it to bully me, calling me a fat pig lately. Borderline personality disorder is a dissociative disorder, so naturally, I can't change my weight overnight to feel better. I was having symptoms called splitting from the bullying. Splitting is part of borderline personality disorder. I needed instant change to cope. I took scissors to my very long hair to cope, telling myself, "I'm not that person they are bullying now. I no longer look like the person they bullied." It was something I could control, unlike the bullying, while trying to disassociate, disassociate from the overwhelming feelings. How do I cope in the long run is where the focus needs to be. What I have been doing to get better from bullying is I come to city council meetings, and I go to places with the types of people I want to be, what I want to be in my life. If I am hanging out with the types of people I want to be like, I am no longer the type of person the bullies want me to be. I believe to survive bullying while mentally ill, it is important to keep refocusing on your support system, even if it is just plain old Martha working at the grocery aisle. After three good thoughts, you have turned it back around in your success. Bullies don't make it to the higher grounds fast due to their behavior, and you can survive this, just like me.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Sunshine. Justin Haller, after Justin is Teresa Simon, and then Christine Quinn.
Unfortunately, I wasn't here the week you guys decided about the property taxes, and it's really disheartening, especially concerning that you raised property taxes during closed doors, when everyone else was out of work, and you were getting a $56,000 salary from a part-time job, and the rest of you were getting a $46,700 salary from a part-time job. And most of you can't even bother to show up for that. That's a $898 slap in the face when you can't show up to your part-time job. It's pretty horrific. Anyway, it's, it's deplorable, because I know one person in particular whose rent went up 22% because you couldn't raise rents during the pandemic, and then when the pandemic stopped, boom, everyone needs to raise their rents again. 22%, that's a lot. And I guarantee you, a lot of that is because of the property taxes. And now yet again, you're going to raise the property taxes, which hurts people. And like Cathcart said, doesn't always, it doesn't always go directly towards police. So find another way. Everyone in this room has a budget on this side. We don't get government salaries on this side. We don't have a static salary on this side. Some of us work hourly, some of us work sourly, but we work for our money. We work more than part-time for our money. And it's a slap in the face to do what you do with our money. I know two painters who, for $5,000. I know two painters who, for $5,000, could paint rainbow crosswalks and, and, and give me a kickback and have a steak dinner. How is it it costs $300,000? How? 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 How does it cost that much? It's government spending at its worst. It's a waste. You could have an extra presence on, on, on the street with police. You could have potholes fixed. You could have snow being plowed. Any number of things other than that, you could have had it crowdfunded. But no, you decide to waste our money, time and time again, on useless crap. The only, what, what, what was, what is the LBCT, a LMNOP hieroglyph group? What is that, 3%, 4%? I don't care what you are, who you are, what you do and you do, as long as it's with consenting adults. But I don't care about the agenda. I don't need a rainbow flag. I don't need anything special because I'm a left-handed, red-headed Pisces with blue eyes. I don't care what I am. I am what I am. Giggity, giggity, Popeye. But the thing is, you can't sit there and waste our money continuously like this. You can't do it. It's offensive. You sit there every frickin' week and ignore us about the things we care about and you just go, oh, no, 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 it's okay, it's okay. Because we'll just tax you more and spend more. You're pathetic. You're useless. You're more than useless.
Thanks for coming down, Justin. Teresa, Simon.
My pronouns are Ron Swanson, by the way.
And Christine Quinn, after Teresa.
I heard that, me too.
I'm not a cop fan and I'm not a fire department fan. And I still would have agreed to the tax. So I do want to say that because I think that we actually have to have those people out there. We actually have to have those people. I just don't want them at my house or my houses or behind my car. We do have to fund them. I actually want to talk about something totally different, though. Jesus Christ, dude. I'm sorry. Can I have just a hair more time?
I was about to say I.
I, I think I've been interrupted here.
Yeah, yeah, keep going.
Okay, so I came to talk about the Spokane County Courts, the city police and the sheriff's office and the citizens. And I'd like to say that white people usually make white babies. Black people usually make black babies. Mixed couples usually make, I don't know what they make. They make my son. Spokane attorney Harrington was found to have submitted paperwork that indicated to the courts that two white people gave birth to our 13-year-old son. DNA should have solved that. I suppose that's why that never happened. The judges just changed the case. So if you had a car wreck and you had a house burn insurance claim, they took it from paternity to parentage six months later after they wrongfully restrained us as parents. And they haven't seen my son but once in eight years. And I don't even know what I did. The restraining order, as far as I'm concerned, is illegal according to what Marino put out in her paperwork. Witherspoon Kelly refused to investigate CV 2014-584 where the female who ended up with my kid was removed from her mother's care in Idaho. The male told law enforcement in Idaho that he was the grandfather of my son. My son, the last I know, was sleeping in the garage and there's only one bed in the garage and the male sleeps in the garage. Pornography was shipped to my kid via my phone. That's part of the court record. No background check was ever ran until after they gave my kid away. We were ruled as fit parents. We have no CPS reports. We have no criminal background. Marino was accused of fraud. The appeals court said we didn't meet the nine elements of fraud. There's only one element of fraud when it's a judge. We sent it to the Supreme Court. They denied hearing it. So there's a case called Brom where they paid something like $240 million to move foster kids from, that couldn't get moved. Now they're trying to move private party to private party and they're stealing people's kids doing it. So I just want you to be aware that that's what our courts are doing. The sheriff refused to investigate it. He told me, it's no wonder my son didn't come home.
I gave you some extra time.
Thank you.
But we're done. Thanks.
I'd like to talk to anybody who would like to talk to me about that.
All right, Christine Quinn, we're last in person. And then we're going to have Lucy Fausto on video. Welcome, Christine.
Hi, I'm from West Hills. Tonight, I'm not talking about West Hills because of something that happened. I have a, I'm co-leader of a Girl Scout troop. And I thought, I love the new library, the central library. I, at the time, I thought, why are they remodeling it? And I know now, it's spectacular. I attended the homeless program there and just what a beautiful, incredible space. So I met with a lot of opposition from the parents. They did not like the idea of meeting there. And I talked everyone into it. And I was actually sick for our first meeting. So my co-leader sent me a text and she said, I just got to our room and there's seven people in there. And I texted, I said, go get security and they'll help you. And she tried and they wouldn't help her. And so she was able to have the people in there leave. There are needles, there are blood splatters on the wall. She cleaned up the room. Oh, first I had her, I said, go look for another empty room and just tell them, we'll move to that room. And every room had people in there who most likely hadn't reserved it. And nobody would help her. Security wouldn't do anything. And so as I said, she went and shoot everyone out and cleaned. And in the meantime, there was someone at the front entrance to show the girls where to go. And in that time, apparently, three people were assaulted. And it's really, we won't be meeting there anymore. So I have, I have a grandson and I talked to my daughter-in-law and I said, oh, you got to take them to the new library. This is in the same week. So this was Thursday, the 17th. And actually, this happened Tuesday before that. And she said, oh, I don't like going there because in the front. And I said, walk through the skywalk and then you can avoid all that. And she said, okay. So they, she's four, so she took him for story time. And they, the library's doors had an open jet and someone, his pants down to his ankles and proceed to urinate in front of my four-year-old grandson. And then two other people went crazy because he did that. So I'm just heartbroken, really heartbroken that we have this phenomenal facility that it's tragic. So, and I want to say, though, I'm really happy that you funded Hope House.
All right, the end of your time. Thanks for coming down, Christine.
Thank you so much.
All right, we've got Lucy Fausto on video. And then we're going to have Dave M. on phone and Ray Lombardon on phone.
Lucy, you should be able to unmute yourself and turn your video on if you'd like.
Thank you.
Welcome to city council, Lucy.
Thank you so much, council president and council members. I'm Lucy Fausto and I'm actually a compliance officer at ORC Information. It is a background screening company. We do tenant and employment background checks. And, excuse me, I had to run downstairs. I was putting the kiddos to bed. Touching my breath. Excuse me. So I wanted to talk about the landlord tenant ordinance that was put in place reviewing the ordinance.
Lucy, Lucy, I gotta, I gotta stop you. And unfortunately, and I, so you have to testify, you have to sign up for that. This is open forum and so you can't address what was on the other agenda in open forum. But next week, we will have that landlord tenant ordinance will be there. So you can sign up again. But be sure to sign up for that ordinance. But in the meantime, you can email any of us with your comments. We'd love to hear from you as well. And I'm sorry that you're almost the end. You waited and you, that didn't work out.
It's okay, no worries. Yeah, I will contact the council members with the information and will love to get their, give them the perspective from a background screening company.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thanks.
All right, then we're going to phone and that will be Dave M. If you want to hit star three, Dave. All right, last call for Dave. All right, then we have Rayland Barden. If you'd like to hit star three. All right, welcome back to city council, Rayland.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wow, I just heard my echo, okay. Thank you so much, council. I'm just here representing VOA to speak on just affordable housing dollars to build housing and not, not to fund shelter operations. So just a few bullet points I just wanted to share. So Canada's declared affordable housing as an emergency and has one of the lowest vacancy rates in the country. Housing costs have escalated at an unprecedented rate, pricing out our most low-income individuals in our community. The average age of women at Hope House Shelter is, used to be 44 and the past few years has increased to 60 years old. Many of these women have never experienced homelessness, live on fixed income and lost their housing due to increased rents. Creating housing stock in our community is the only way to address the supply and demand issue we are faced with this community. Please do not use the one source that is designed to create affordable housing and shelter operations. This will bottleneck our shelters and create even less opportunity for people to escape homelessness. And VOA just asks that you consider this as you prioritize your budget. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much, Rayland. And that brings us, thanks so much, Rayland. That brings us to the end of open forum and the end of our meeting. We will be back at 11 o'clock for a study session to discuss the upcoming budget and then back next Monday for committee, public safety, I believe, and then a regular legislative session. Please drive safe, take care of yourself and if you can, take care of someone else. We're adjourned.